Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the meeting to order. If you would all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. First up, we have some special recognition. As everyone noticed, we had the Vista Elementary 5th Grade Orchestra with us this evening. Thank you very much. Dr. Pierce?
Okay. First, I should also just make the announcement that unfortunately, we had a sound system issue in our boardroom tonight. So when we speak into the microphones, it is going out to anyone who is here attending remotely, but the sound isn't coming out of the speakers here in the room. So we're just going to ask everybody to speak real loudly this evening and project voices so hopefully everyone can hear. So I'm so excited tonight because we've invited Vista's 5th Grade Orchestra to come this evening. Their orchestra teacher is Kelly McFadden. Let's give her a big round of applause. And we've got Principal Jennifer Behrens here as well as Assistant Principal The administrative team from Vista here. Thank you for being here tonight. And of course, our students who are here because they participated in the Middle School Orchestra Festival in April and scored a superior rank. And I'll let Ms. McFadden, after they play, talk a little bit about that. But we'd love to have you play one more song. And anyone who's attending remotely will get to hear it as well. All right. My name is Kelly McFadden, and it is my pleasure to work with wonderful students. These are our 5th graders plus one honorary second. And these kids began playing for the first time on September 20th. That was their first day of playing these instruments, almost all of them ever. And they didn't even really even know how to open their cases at that time. So it really shows to a true testament of their character that they come early every morning, four days a week, 7:45 to 8:30. And they come well-practiced, work really, really hard. And this is the progress they have made just in these eight months. So I'm so proud of them. It's an honor to be here. They were, they attended a middle school large group orchestra festival. And at that festival, they were evaluated by two different educators on several, several different things, their technique, their expression, their ensemble skill. And they received 93 and 94 out of 100. The two, from the two adjudicators. And so that earned them a superior ranking, which is the highest rating they could possibly get. And so I'm just so grateful to Mrs. Behrens and to Tina Brewer for helping us make this happen because we've never done this before attending a middle school festival. So it's just a delight, and I just want to say thank you again. And these kids are amazing, and they deserve all the kudos. Well, thank you. And we're so glad you're here tonight, not only so we can recognize you, but so you can also help us make tonight's recognition a little more special. So thank you, students and Ms. McFadden for being here. In addition to recognizing the orchestra, we've got a couple other special recognitions this evening. We're celebrating our district volunteers. So every spring, our buildings hold some sort of volunteer recognition tea or some sort of ceremony to recognize volunteers who come in and read or do other volunteer work in the schools. And we wanted to do that same thing for our volunteers who volunteer on our district committees. So we have numerous district committees and parent advisory councils. We've got community engagement board, career and technical education advisories. We have our district equity team, our E-CAP preschool advisory, our facilities executive committee, our focus committee, instructional materials committee, which is new this year. We've got a migrant and bilingual parent advisory council, a special education parent advisory committee, and new this year as well, a tribal education and collaboration committee. So we have numerous community members and parents and even staff members who volunteer their time on committees, and we want to recognize them this evening. So if you are here from any of our district committees, you received an invitation to come tonight and be recognized, could you please stand? And I'm going to ask you to remain standing because we have a little something for you. And London is helping me with that. So we've got some special Kennewick School District Proud Volunteer pins. And it's just a small token of our appreciation for all of your time and commitment and energy in investing with our school district to make it the best possible place for students. So we want to thank you, give you a big round of applause, and appreciate you for what you do. And I know I see members of all, all of the committees, I think, here, here tonight. So we appreciate you coming out and taking the time. Hope you got some cookies and punch and enjoyed the wonderful orchestra and hope that you'll continue to work with us next year as well. So thank you so much. And our last special recognition tonight, I put her to work, so, is our student's school board representative. So I'll wait till, till London is finished. Thank you, London, helping pass out those volunteer pins. Because we have a little recognition for London tonight as well. Yeah, surprise! So London is our 2022-23 Student School Board Representative. And we are coming to the end of the year, and London's a senior, and she hasn't agreed to stay and continue to serve. She is going to graduate and move on. And London, we've so appreciated, and I know board members are going to want to say a few things, but so appreciated all of your hard work, professionalism. You've taken your role so seriously. You've, you've really gone above and beyond. And so we have a little plaque of appreciation for you that says, "An appreciation of your dedication and service on behalf of the students and staff of the Kennewick School District, London Moody Honored Member, Kennewick School Board, 2022-2023." And I want to invite board members to share any thoughts they would like to with London.
Well, London, like I say, you've always shown up. You've always got a big smile on your face. You're always prepared. You have great things to add. You have been nothing but professional and kind, and we truly appreciate having you on the board. So we're going to miss you, but we know you're going to go do wonderful things.
You know, we, we always fight here on the board about different things. And one of the things tonight is the first ones to say congratulations to you. I'm sure we all want to go first. I didn't quite make it to first. Sorry. It's okay. But I think you know, you're awesome. Thanks for everything you did. Glad you were able to go through. Thank you.
Thank you, London. I didn't know that London was my neighbor until this year, and I wish I'd known a long time ago because I'm very proud of her. And she's also a good neighbor. I know that from other neighbors. But I appreciate the fact that you've spent a lot of time with the students, and that's been a very important part this year for a lot of the information that you brought to us. So I know that you will take your leadership skills and go on and do great things for us. So thanks.
London, you're, you're sweet. You're beautiful. You are a wonderful ambassador. You were a hard worker. You're so smart. I'm so proud of you. Love you. Love your family. And so really, of course, I know you better. I knew you a little before this, and I know you a lot after. And you and the family are just wonderful, wonderful souls.
Well, going last is a hard thing to follow up on here. But London, you're going to do fantastic things at, at college. And you've been a fantastic advocate for students this year. And you've just been an amazing student board rep, and I look forward to seeing the big things that you do. And thank you so much.
Wonderful. Well, we, we can move on to our business portion of the meeting, but know that this, we'll probably want to give the students a minute to back up. Okay. Thank you all again for being here.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Fantastic again.
We'll just stand up behind.
Which way do you want? London, you can scoot to the middle.
Do you know why we put you in front? Right in front of me. Nice, London.
Stand tall, Mike, on your tiptoes.
You got to be right in front of Mike.
That's funny.
Maybe they'll see you clearly. It's shiny.
She told him they could have one cookie.
So, um, the girl, I don't, I don't know her, but the girl at Southridge just won state golf today. Yeah.
She was doing really well.
Yeah, just, just, they just posted about it.
I think she was, yesterday she was third.
Yeah, she was doing really well.
I mean, it was really close.
You don't remember her last night?
Yes, I know. I was like, it was HUI.
HUI.
Yeah, HUI.
She played last year.
She did. She did really well last year.
And she won it, huh?
First, I can tell you that. Oh. Very, so, so close.
Oh, yes.
Very.
So amazing. She's a small.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Keep your, that's the symbol.
I get nervous and undisciplined at the court.
Okay, I think we've got everyone who has vacated. I think we're ready to move on. Do we have anyone online tonight? No? Okay. So we, we have one speaker tonight, Ms. Tina Gregory. Ms. Gregory, you know the rules. Do I need to go through them again, or are we, we good? Right on. All right. There you go.
Thank you. Tracy, I would just like to thank you for your smile and your love for our community. I just love how you are with our community and our board. And London, what an amazing job you've done this year. You're going to be very missed, and I, I love that the school board has allowed this to happen. You have a big spot to fill in the future. So thank you. What I'm here tonight for is, "I will not be conformed to this world. My mind will be renewed in Christ. Who gains when we castrate or sterilize our children? Who benefits when we, when our bloodlines are no longer? Or when forced grooming and sexualizing is normal? The evil leaders who love to victimize our children and steal their identity. The enemy comes to steal, kill, and destroy. It's time we wake up. Public schools are for teaching academics, not brainwashing our children against their families. We have record suicide rates. If they don't, if a child does not want to identify as something other than what they are, they are scorned." I have many children that have been telling me this. Board, I would like to know if the principal that placed a work order on a fence to be painted to push their religion is going to be financially responsible for that painting. And also, I'd like to know if the principal and the leaders that put us on the map with this whipped cream episode are being held accountable if anything's going to happen with that. "School is for teaching academics, not indoctrination. I'm calling on all of you to remove the pornography from our schools. Let us get back to teaching our Bill of Rights and Constitution. I'd love to see God back in our schools. If we continue to allow other religion, it's time we should allow the Bible." And it's amazing seeing the kids, and I see all of the wonderful things that we do, but the indoctrination needs to stop for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on, we are on to consent items.
I move to approve consent items as written.
Senator.
Okay. Any comments or questions? If not, I will call for the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Sunvit?
Yes.
Mr. Mabry?
Yes.
And Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Perfect. Okay. Superintendent and board member reports. Dr. Pierce, would you like to start us off?
I would. Thank you. I have just a couple things tonight. I wanted to just mention that our ATP End of Year Celebration, that's our Action Team for Partnerships, which focuses on community and family engagement efforts. All of our schools have an ATP, and they have an End of Year Celebration, which brings all of the teams together to highlight the things that they did over the years and share resources amongst schools. And so that event happened last week, and it was just a great event. I know board members were invited, and so I just wanted to highlight the great work that is continuing around family and community engagement. And then I wanted to shift into talking about, which is hard to do, but like I said, we have to have a new board rep because London won't stay. And so if, if board remembers, the policy was updated this year. So this year, the board's going to be selecting two representatives, a representative-elect who will essentially have the opportunity to observe and learn from the student board member who will sit on the dais. And then we'll move into the student board rep position when the board rep graduates, right? So this year, we're going to be selecting two. And we have interviews. I've been contacting the students who applied, and we have nine students. So we really tried to increase our awareness. London did a really great little informational video, and that was shared out. Just to, to increase awareness about this leadership opportunity for students. And so it did yield a good result. Like I said, we have nine applicants. And so I know that multiple board members are planning to participate in that interview process. We've got that on the books. But I did make, we did, Patty made these for me, copies of all of the applicants so everybody can have a chance to look at them, even if you're not participating in the interview process. At the interview process, the board members who are participating in that will make the selection, which is essentially a recommendation that then comes to the board for official action. So you can take one of these and pass it on and have a packet, and then you've got the time blocked out on your calendars. And like I said, I've been getting confirmation from the students. I think I just need to hear from two more students about their time slot. And so we'll have a full schedule, but it's great to have so many, so many applicants for the position. So I just wanted to share that.
Wonderful. Thank you. London, your very last report.
Well, thank you, guys, for all the sweet words. It means so much. This year's been great. I've absolutely loved this. It's been such an honor and just an amazing experience. And as the year comes to an end, we have one more student advisory meeting. It will be next week, and we will be inviting new members. They will be attending. So we'll have new members attending that will be sitting with us next year, and then pretty much just graduation. That's all I have, and thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, just real quick. I had a call with, with a fantastic student from Southridge, kind of sharing with me all the work that he's done on financial literacy and how he's been able to grow a club within Southridge to, I think, over 150 members, and this thing is, is taking off. But a very, very bright young man, and I think he's going to get a chance to come and share some words with us here in the one or two board meetings from now. But it was great just to hear his passion for, for what he's doing. And so did that. And then I would just say, good luck to all our athletes at state. I know London's, your, your team starts tomorrow. We've got a bunch of other teams participating, so good luck to everyone.
Thank you.
I was also going to wish everybody who's advancing to state good luck. This is, uh, this has been the, this week, as everybody knows, there was filing week for people who want to run for school board, and, and we have some people running this, this time. So I was actually got, got a lot of, a lot of phone calls from community members and from candidates and stuff. So I spent a lot of time, like, talking about that kind of stuff and talking to people and to candidates and stuff. It was actually kind of fun. So it really, I felt really engaged in that way. Talked to just, I felt it was probably more phone calls than I've had in a really long time, but just about that kind of stuff. So kind of fun and kind of seeing kind of where, where everything's going to shake out and really excited and wish everybody, wish everybody luck.
Thank you, Clay.
I was honored, I guess is the word, to go to the Yakima Nation convening of school directors and tribal leaders last Thursday. And I'll try not to cry. I was telling Ron. We spent the morning with nine of the tribal leaders, telling about their experience in school. And it wasn't, except for one, it was not a good experience. And one of the examples was, one of the men was a very good athlete and tried out for a team and was told, "You bet. You're in. You're great, but you have to cut your hair." And he wears his hair long and a braid, and he did even as a young man. And he said, "I can't do that. That's, you know, that's part of my heritage. That's where our wisdom comes from." And he was told he couldn't be on the team. And we've come a long way in 40-some years, but we still have a lot of things for all of our students, but especially some of our smaller groups of students. But then there were some, some great things too. And, and one of the things that Dr. Pierce and I talked about when I was telling her about it is, we're, we're maybe not counting our students as accurately as we can, our native, Alaska native and American Indian students. And so I sent you those papers, and hopefully we'll be able to do that because that is actually a treaty right for them to have that money come to them, federal and state money. And then the district is supposed to be doing things with it for them. And so that was an amazing time. And one of the great things was, we had cheesecake, and it had hand-picked huckleberries on it. If you've ever picked huckleberries, that's a lot of work, and that was pretty amazing too. I was at the MCP Talent Show last, that same evening, and the only word I can think about is, wow. We, we have some all over. I mean, we saw these kids today. It's super talented, but I was just amazed. And MCP has some ability to do some different things than other schools were. But if you get a chance next year, go to theirs. That was very good. And then, excuse me, yesterday was the Key Connections, which we partner with Ben Franklin Health on that. And one of our speakers was Joe Razzo, who's a teacher at Southridge. And he and Chris Blackman, also a teacher at Southridge, and Lorena, who's our CIS person up there, did a after-prom drug and alcohol-free party at Atomic Bowl. And they had about 400 some kids go to prom, and 100 of those kids came to that party. And it was free for the kids to come, and it was from 10 to, I think, 1:00 in the morning. And they're going to do another one next year, hopefully, for homecoming and prom. And so they were very happy to participate with us on that. And that was it, because I was out of town.
Thank you. Ron?
I have a couple of things. First is, at the beginning of, before the kids started playing, I was talking to a couple of, three parents, and we were having a discussion, and usually, as usual, I brought some homework. Tracy? The arts, this week has also included sports. Have been the time for plays and some musicals, I think, going on this week. And to help with attendance, is it possible that we can get the school, the whole school involved? And here's, here's what I mean, is that you have the plays being put on, but we have JAKA that can handle the financial side and put aid in putting on the play and with promotions. We have the art department, different departments that could help make a poster that can be shared in the community so that you can get the word out better to journalism. They could get on the radio, promote it, and make it part of the curriculum. Then this time of the year, they come up with some class project to promote the plays or whatever's going on. And, and Gabe, you mentioned the, the person with the economic side. They can add, how can we raise money? How can we fund this? That can be part of the econ class, economic class or money management class. And, and by doing so, the whole class is part of that production and more apt to come and watch the production since they had some input in the production. Just an idea. Okay. The other part is that we've got a little reading competition going. I brought it up last time. I'm bringing it up again tonight. Sadly to say, I don't, I shouldn't say sadly. I think Diane passed me.
51, right?
She showed it, and she was gladly showing it tonight. And, and there's also a celebration around there. Washington Elementary is going to have a celebration on May 25th from 11:30 to noon, and again on June 5th from 12:00 noon to 12:30. and again on June 5th from 12:00 noon to 12:30. If you can make one of those, I've asked permission, Shawna, she hadn't got back to me yet, but if we could go to those, I think it would be great, one of the, one or two of those celebrations because the kids take pride in, in also that reading competition. I think I beat those kids. I just want to rub it in.
You might be very surprised.
I know I'll be surprised.
Those kids are readers.
Anyway, that's what I had.
Perfect. Thank you. So I've had, doing some school visits this week and one of the coolest visits I had was at Hawthorne. I walk in the door and there was, I got there right on time, walked in the door and here was this very nice young lady named Kennedy. She stuck out her hand to Mr. Connors, pleasure to meet you. If you'd follow me, please, I'd like to show, walk you down and meet my two friends. And I can't remember all their names, so she introduced me to two nice young men and they shook my hand and they marched me over and said, oh, we'd like you to show your other friends. Please follow us, sir. And they walked me down the hall and they gave me a 30-minute tour of the school before I even saw the principal. And it was awesome. They stood up straight, they shook my hand, they answered my questions, yes, sir, no, sir, what can we do for you, walked me back to the principal and handed me off. And it was absolutely the coolest thing. And it, it was just really cool that Principal Miller and his staff are teaching these soft skills, which I think are so important for kids to understand some of the things. And that just goes so far for them later in life. So anyway, I was just really proud and I wanted to make sure that I shouted that out. Again, the other schools have wonderful things going on as well, but that really stood out to me as something that I wanted to make sure I mentioned today because it was really pretty spectacular.
Piggybacking.
Matt, did you all get the email from Hawthorne about the?
I told you the date. No, I don't remember. But from Jessica Bidalik about attending their volunteer thing since we were amazing shape people. Did you get it?
Yes.
Look, there it is. What's the date?
I obviously didn't make the cut.
Me either, Mike.
Yeah, exactly. Well, someone had to go, so it may as well be me.
May 31st from 3:00 to 3:30. You're invited. I know.
Are you sure? Okay, awesome. Thank you. I don't want to be that guy.
Party crasher.
Yeah, exactly.
But I think that's exactly, you know, that's what you saw, that amazing shake. That's.
It was, it was, was really, really cool. I was super, super impressed. Okay, moving on, reports and discussions. We have the preliminary budget for 2024. And as always, Mr. Roberts with his magical spreadsheets.
All right. Oh, dude, I gave you a comparison, three districts. That's what the OSPI has a tool.
Okay. Thank you. I was going to ask what this was for, so thank you.
Yeah, they usually don't get it all completed until like in April. So it's from last year, but it's interesting information. So not a lot of change from the last meeting. I'll just touch on a few items here down at the bottom here. The property tax, increased that a little bit based on looking at collections in the spring versus fall. So we expect to get a little more in the spring here of January 2000, 2024 collections there. So just a small increase. And then the levy equalization formula that was updated by the state and that would result in a little more money than what we had projected. And mostly the, the state just came out and said their other computation model is up to date. So we'll be plugging in some numbers and hopefully be pretty close to matching all these numbers up here. But so slight change there, 21.5 million on the basic ed local funded increase. And then some changes here on the, the staff, non-staff cost. There's a few staff here we missed that were on leave that, you know, substitutes were in those positions. So that kind of got increased a little bit here. And then some programs down here on the lab, there's some teachers there that were teaching some classes and for next year, those classes won't be offered. And so they'll have, those have to go back into basic ed. So that creates a cost there. And some CTE also got shifted to basic ed. So instead of, you know, CTE paying, say, $100,000, now it's going to go to basic ed and that increases those numbers. So that, that's part of the staffing process. So change there about 12.4 million there. So we, we did gain a little bit of ground with that revenue change, but and here's the numbers, there's 21.5, that's the revenue change. And then 12.48, that's this number down here. So we're still right around and we've whittled this down a little bit. And remember, we're losing about $13 million of levy, levy equalization. So if we had that, we'd be pretty, a lot better shape. But and then the, the prior year, we lost about 20 million there. So, so those numbers changed a little bit. We're really more concerned about 24, 25. So this number here, it needs to be probably $5 million or less and we can manage that. And there's a lot of projections here, 24, 25, you know, 100 more kids, we're, we're saying that's 950,000. There will be some more SEL funding, but that is really, you know, we don't have any mental health in the budget for next year. The mental health in the budget this, the mental health in budget for next year is funded through ESRA. And in 24, 25, it's not in here at all. The same thing with the tutoring. So, so there's quite a bit left there. There's curriculum costs that are not in the budget. We have about 200, 300,000 in there. If the state numbers come in a little better than what I'm projecting, we'll put a little more in that. But again, that's going to have to be looked at. So the concern is here, you know, 24, 25 and these out years. And, you know, there's some unknowns, enrollment, some of these things, we just don't know. But we got to keep that in this neighborhood to continue to get through the next two or three years. Any, any questions so far on that?
Yeah. Vic, can you just clarify, when you say there, there's no mental health in the budget, what do you, what, what does that mean? Like?
Yeah, let me go, let me go to one more page here.
Okay.
So, so here's the, the overall. If you look at 23, 24, when you look at all the revenue, 20, 293 million versus 309 million expenses. And here's that difference we've been talking about, the 16 million right here. So there's no, the, the mental health contract with comprehensive is over $1 million. That's not in here. So when I put the ESRA money in, it's going to be about 15 to 20 million of revenue and five to 10 million here, it'll be in that number. Yeah. So in 23, 22, 23, this was the budget we worked with. And then we added $15 million of ESRA and $5 million of ESRA cost. So the net there is 10 million. That's where you get that 10 million.
Right.
And the 10 million difference is really going to come out and it's going to pay for these bunch of salaries. But anyway, the ESRA then would have been down here in the 5 million, the tutoring and that. So does that clarify that a little bit? And, and this is, you know, the overall, what we're looking at preliminary, it could change a little bit for the 21st as some numbers change, but hopefully not significantly. And like I said, we, we have $35 million ESRA left at the end of last year. We're going to use probably about 15 this year and then we'll use 15 to 20 next year. That'll be put in here with five to 10 million here. So we're talking about a curriculum adoption for next year of math, which is, could be pretty expensive and, you know, a couple million dollars or more, I'm not sure. And that would be part of that along with mental health and tutoring. And then here's another, another way of looking at the, the budget. This one, the top part of the basic ed local funded, so any programs where we have to use tax dollars or local funds. And this is really what we've been talking about with, with kind of the changes in revenue and, and that. Down here at the bottom are programs, we really can't use that money. And that's where I say like CTE, if some costs had to come out of here, they go to basic ed, you know, that, that makes things a little worse for us. The numbers here, this is overhead, this is allowed costs that we can take for, you know, your overhead admin, those type of things. But mostly we've been working with this, you know, what's the change in revenue expenditures? And, and now we're kind of bringing it all together here. So any questions on some of these? We're still working with food service. It's kind of a placeholder. I'm going to be meeting with them next week and they do their meal counts and, and that revenue, but they're, they will get enough revenue to cover this 200 or 300,000 dollars.
Any questions?
The CTE that shifted back to BE, why was that? What classes or?
There's some classes that were in, I think Chinook. They had, with the art requirement, the science and some things and they needed space. And one of the CTE teachers went over to do science and some of that as part of it. And then some other, some of their admin costs that, since CTE's enrollment is down, there's just a few things to move around to so they can continue to, to meet some of their needs.
And then my second question, that state retirement decrease, that 5% or whatever, almost six, where does that go then? That money that's not?
It's just net savings. So in the big picture, it just, you know, in, in say this scenario here, it's net savings that's, you know, received. If we didn't get that, this would be changed, this number here by $800,000. It'd be 16.85 million. Whatever that difference was. Right here, 826. It would change the bottom line. Yeah, so you might have heard the state saying how, you know, that creates savings for districts, that retirement change. And that, that's exactly what they're talking about. We're getting, you know, 4.5, 0.6 million there and 5342 there. So a little bit of difference and it helps us a little bit. So any other questions on this sheet here, some of these other programs? You know, bilingual pedal programs, all those programs have to fund themselves and provide a little bit of overhead admin type costs. Then kind of a summary of what we've discussed, a lot of this, I think we've already went over the levy. You know, it's another 13 million that we're not going to see next year. The ESRA funds, talked about that. Like I said, math curriculum here, it's, it's a big cost and there'll be more on that probably throughout the, the year next year. You know, some of those, those type of costs, you know, it's always hard to, you know, how do you gauge success? You know, how, how do you gauge the need? You know, if you do a roof, you know, you see it, you know, and some of those things. And you buy a, a bus, you, you see it. And I think Dr. Pearson, her weekly update, talking about assessment, you know, there's a bunch of bullets there, you know, about, you know, how, how do you determine you're getting your money's worth or you can measure it? And that's some of the things we have difficulty with, especially with, you know, spending two, three million dollars on things, curriculum and those type of things. You really need to, you know, how, how do you measure that? Communities and schools, 11 schools, there was a placeholder in the contract to add three schools over the next three years. You know, we'll just have to look at the funding again next year and see what we can do. And we talked about the mental health contract there. We've talked about council funding, school safety. Oops. Here's a little bit on the CTE. Ecap, so we are moving to portable there and they probably won't be getting more students next year, but the following year they should be having, be able to converting the half-day slots to some full-day slots. So they'll, should be prepared for that with the portable removal. So the teen parent program, we started, I think it started up November, December last year and there's 15 kids in attendance every day. So that's probably helping 15 of our students continue to get through their high school. CEP again for all, all schools, that's good. And we talked about some portable moves there. So that's it, you know, for general fund, we'll get to the public hearing, you know, it'll probably be not, not hopefully too many slides and it seems like we went over quite a bit of information. A couple of funds we didn't talk about yet, the ASB fund. And you can see their budget and projected here. So they have a lot of, lot of big plans for next year. You can see the revenue is up significantly as they want to fundraise and, you know, travel and do trips and things. I'm not that involved in the ASB. They, they work with the fiscal officer and it's students and advisories and things. Big ideas, I grilled my fiscal officer, they want to go to Disneyland and this and that. So hopefully they can make it work. But they'll be, they'll be in good shape here. Any questions on that? There's revenue up here, athletics, mostly gate fees, things there, class, class collections for those type of things. And clubs is the big one where they collect money to kind of fund their programs. And the other program, self-insured fund. So we're self-insured for workers' compensation and unemployment. We see the projected here. You know, we try to watch this. We didn't quite get as much revenue. We were still down employees, so there's not as many hours that gets computed on the rate. And hopefully next year, those hours will go up. You know, we did have some positions we didn't fill and custodial and various areas that we're just starting to kind of get back. So but, and there is a contingency in here of 500,000 that we don't expect to touch, but in case there's some, some major L and I type things going on, we put that in there. But if that comes out and we get a little more revenue, we'll be okay. We continue to monitor this and make sure we have enough money based on our actuarial type of requirements. And then unemployment, so we had a, a pretty big credit from the state, so we haven't had to pay much. It was during COVID, they had some, some special situations where we ended up getting their credit. So it's only projected 50,000 dollars of claims this year. Generally, we would think around 100,000, a little contingency here. And we try to keep this fund around 550, 600,000 dollars of cash. And if, if we need a little more cash, then we, we try not to, you know, collect the money as it comes from staff and premium rates if we don't have to. So that's a placeholder there in case we do need to collect some more funding. Any questions on self-insured? Oh, and the auditors, they don't like us. Every year they're saying, you know, we want you to move this cash to the general fund. And we're like, well, no, it really doesn't fit in the general fund. But we may have to move it to the general fund and then move it back out. But if it gets moved to the general fund, there'll be a liability created with it. So if we move $4 million to the general fund, there'll be a liability created as we actuarially, you know, owe that money in the future. So we might have to have a little conversation with the auditors, but it'll mostly be one check written and then, you know, maybe a check back. Questions there?
Was that what the state auditor was referring to? They got a little prickly about?
Yes, they did. And they, they think it'll increase the fund balance, but it won't. It's going to go into liability. So we'll see what we can do to keep them happy.
You got something?
Yep. So June 21st, like I said, we'll plug in the numbers in the state model and, you know, we're hoping we're getting pretty close within 500,000 up or down.
Good.
Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you. Next up is K-12 student academic growth and proficiency targets. This is St. Helair will be presenting.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's nice to be back with you. I'm going to talk a little bit about our, some of our assessment data and how our kids are doing tonight. This ties to our strategic goals. I just want to remind the board that we have a goal that our students are engaged learners. And we're just going to really tie tonight into making progress. We're going to be looking at growth and also meeting grade level standards. So I just kind of want to remind the board that we look at lots of indicators. Mid-year, we looked at MAP and DIBELS and we also looked at On Track for Graduation. So our MAP window just closed on Friday. All of the schools have finished MAP testing. They are still doing DIBELS and Smarter Balance, so we will look at that in the fall. So for tonight, we're going to look at growth and proficiency that's outlined in our district performance indicators. So our growth, we want all kids growing. Our kids who are a little bit behind, our kids who are on, our kids who are above, we want everyone growing. So we have goals around growth. And then we also want to measure how we're doing and making sure we're meeting those grade level expectations. So tonight, we're going to frame that, all the goals tonight that we're going to talk about are around MAP. So I'm not going to look at everything, just what we can do with our MAP data. So I'm not going to look at everything, just what we can do with our MAP data. So we'll look at mostly second through eighth grade in reading and math for MAP. So we'll start with our elementary schools. And this is just a really broad, very high level look. Um, I do want to point out that this is all students in the grade level. When we looked at this in March, we were just looking at certain populations of students. This is the whole grade level, um, that we're looking at. And we're also looking at spring to spring. So our students had to be here last spring, and then they just took it again, so we can compare what happened between those two testing periods. So this slide that we have right here is related to growth, that all kids are growing in both reading and in math. As a district, we have a goal, we want ninety percent or more of our students making their expected growth from spring to that next spring. And so you can see where we're at in third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade in both reading and math. I do want to point out, I'm going to show in a few slides how this compares to previous years as well. Um, it, it's really hard to look at this so high, it's like, whoa, what does that mean? Right? Um, and I also, um, just, well, what do I want to say? Let's see. This is almost hard to determine, like, what is it saying? Because we look at it also by school, we look at by grade level at school, and we also look at it in the classrooms. Did you have a question?
Yeah, so, okay, it's just, I just want to make sure I'm reading this right.
Please, yes.
Our goal is ninety or above.
Yeah.
And we're fifty-ish, forty-ish, fifty-ish.
Yep.
Okay, so we're, so we're a little bit low there. Seems like, you know, like, um, growth is related to kind of where you are, right? You know, like, if you're, um, if, if, you know, COVID, I think our numbers went really, really down. So it feels like our growth should be like really, really high right now because everybody's coming out of that. So I'm kind of curious to know, I'm sure we're going to get to it, like, what percentage of kids are on target or above targets?
You.
Okay, yeah?
Yep, that's going to be the next slide.
Okay.
So we are going to look at that. I also want to share what's hard about looking at this is, we have some schools and grade levels who are a lot higher than this. Um, and I do have an appendix at the end of the slide, so we can see it by grade level and by school. Um, this, this is a hard number to look at because there's a lot behind it.
The other thing just to mention is when we get to the school level data, at the, at the school level, and we do it too at the district level, we're disaggregating the data by, by program participation, free reduced lunch, uh, language learners, all of those things as well. So we can really dig in to see, look at specific student populations across the district and within schools too.
So, um, to your point, the next slide is looking at who is on grade level? Who is making it, um, and meeting those benchmarks at, at the grade level sets? So a little bit different. Um, and the indicators are slightly different as well. It's not ninety percent, we want sixty-five percent or more to be in the sixtieth percentile or above in reading.
Alyssa, I'm sorry, just, just, I apologize for interrupting, but just one little nuance in this is we're talking about it. Remember our goals, our goals are for all students, right? To be engaged learners, all students to be, uh, making proficiency and being at grade level. Our targets really start with where are we now? When, when we set these targets and the board participated in that process, it was looking at where are we now? Obviously, we want to be a hundred percent all students, that's the goal. But the target is like, if you're starting it, like you said earlier, if you're coming in, and I'm just making up numbers, but like only thirty percent of the students, you, we want to set targets that get us to eventually, yeah, achievable targets. So there's just the difference between the, the bigger goal and then the targets that we've set, based on where we are.
I was going to, I was going to say that, you read my mind.
Okay, um, so this, I just want to, um, share, it looks like I forgot, this is for reading and math, and the percentiles are slightly different for reading and math. For reading, we want them to be sixtieth percentile or above, and for math, it's who are the seventeen, seventieth percentile or above. That's what we're saying is on target. So I'm going to, any questions?
Alyssa, am I remembering that? I think when I just started on the board, we were at fifty percent, we had attained that, and then we moved up as a target.
Yep.
Just trying to remember if that was what we.
We, 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 we made the standard higher.
Right.
And, and because that ultimately, and we don't have the state assessment data back because we're still testing. But ultimately, that's kind of the, the big benchmark that we're looking at. And those percentiles are supposed to cor- uh, correlate more with students actually being at grade level on the state assessment. So that's why we raised those.
Well, and, and here's a little bit of an example, moving into middle school, we're just going to look at growth tonight, um, because our targets are for growth are in MAP, but in proficiency, it's in Smarter Balance when we look at that. So we're just going to look at middle school growth tonight. So moving on to middle school, um, we've got sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and we're looking at growth. So these are the percentage of kids who met their growth. And I, I will point out, and I can share a little more data in a handout if you'd like or follow up with a report, the amount of growth varies from grade level to grade level. So as the kids get older, they don't, the points don't change as much on the score. And we use all these nice charts to decipher, like, how much should a kid be growing to make a year's worth of growth? And it can even vary depending on when, where the student's starting the year and their score. So it, there's some complicated math going on to get these averages out. All right, I wanted to show a little bit as well, some of our trends over time. So I, we did take the last three years to look at growth and proficiency. So this one is related to reading growth, and you can look at, um, each grade level each year. If you'd like, also, you can kind of see the cohort of students. So this would be in third grade, in fourth grade, and then now they're fifth graders. Not exactly the same kids, because kids move around and we get new kids, but you can kind of see if you wanted to look at them that way as well. So this is kind of a, a helpful tool to say, like, are we gaining? Are we, do we need to look at something over time? And we always want to be trending up and seeing those percentages grow. So this one specifically for reading growth. This one would be math growth for third through eighth grade. So students are growing in math. From year to year. The next two would be meeting proficiency. So in second, third, and fourth grade, we're measuring proficiency with MAP, not Smarter Balance. Um, so looking at the MAP assessments that are coming back, this is the percentage of students who are meeting proficiency in those grade levels. Um, it's pretty steady in second grade, third grade went up last year and down a smidge, and then fourth grade went up and is a little bit back down as well. And then same with math. We can see an increase in second and third grade, or it's staying the same in third grade, and it's down a little bit in fourth grade. So when, when these assessments come in, uh, it's always a chance to reflect. Um, in education, we never quite feel like we're at the finish line. It's a lot more continuous feeling. And, uh, we do have some goals and annual objectives because we want to always make sure we're getting better and our students are growing and improving. Uh, so I just wanted to point out a few things here. We continue to work on our multi-tiered systems of support, so we're making sure we're meeting all students and their needs and trying to refine how we support students. Um, we also are offering professional development for engaging and rigorous instruction. Instruction has to be rigorous if we have kids growing, and it can be rigorous at all levels. We want to make sure kids are being challenged appropriately all of the time. We're also making sure that we're analyzing our student data, that we're setting goals to improve, and that we're, uh, identifying strategies to improve student learning, which is what we're doing with this data right now, um, with our building principals, with our grade level teams, and starting to really, um, get a focus on what we need to focus on next year. Um, I also want to highlight, we have some celebrations in this data. When we look at it by grade levels and schools, there are some successes that we can see. And we want to celebrate those, and we want to let people know you are doing the right intentional work and we, what are you doing? How do we expand this and make sure that other students have that opportunity to grow and have success too? And then finally, I want to mention that we are going to enter into a pilot study next year around assessment, and I just wanted to share a few slides about that. Um, so there, for several years, Kennewick has been using DIBELS and MAP as some of our common district assessments in elementary school for DIBELS, MAP for elementary, middle, and even in high school. Um, in the past two years, some schools have been using STAR to be assessing and progress monitoring MAP and reading for academic progress and to help adjust instruction and really inform the teaching that's going on. Um, so, some districts already in the tri cities area have transitioned from MAP to STAR, um, for their common district assessments. And this, this spring, in March, when we talked, we shared that some schools were using STAR, um, to progress monitor students every six weeks or so and adjust their instruction based on what they were seeing. Um, so schools and teachers are using STAR, who are using it, um, really like the reports, they like that it's user friendly, uh, it seems to be quicker assessments. It doesn't have, is not as many one-on-one testing situations, a lot more of it's computerized, so you can test a bigger group all at once as well. But we, it, to do STAR and MAP is a little bit redundant, and we just don't have time for that. So for next year, we're going to, uh, conduct a pilot, um, with schools, um, to really gather some data, um, and really consider strongly replacing DIBELS and MAP with STAR. And we're just, we're taking volunteers right now. So schools can choose to opt into this pilot study. Uh, we want to study and compare student growth and proficiency using STAR versus MAP and DIBELS. Um, and we have the reporting mechanisms to look at growth with STAR, just like we do with MAP. We also want to study and compare, how does that translate to the state assessments? Uh, and those, the learning students are doing. Uh, we want to look at time spent on assessments. We would like to gain time back into instruction versus, um, assessments. Uh, we also want to compare and see what is the data easy to use, um, and really able to address needs of students quickly. And then we also want to look at a return on investment with time, money, um, and just the cost of administering these assessments. So we, we are gathering volunteers, I think we've got about twelve schools interested, so we should have a pretty good study to look at next year, um, and able to see if that would be a good move for our district to make. Questions?
Questions, comments?
Just, uh, real quick, Dr. Pierce, when do we look at these goals again? When do they come to us to? Because the goals come to us to kind of approve or look at, right?
So.
Is that in the fall?
Goals, well, uh, so there's the goals and the targets. And really at the board retreat in June is when we get information from the board to help inform the objectives. So can you go back to that? Uh, what we, what, the, the goals, like our strategic goals, our big goals, we kind of got those set. Then every year, we do a process to get from the board. The, the one with the objectives, like, to inform the work that we're doing to try to achieve the goals.
Sorry.
And we haven't for a couple of years looked at the targets. So there's the target document as well. And, uh, but that would be the perfect time to have that conversation as well, is if, if there's adjustments to the key indicators or the targets, it would be a great topic for the upcoming retreat.
Yeah, because I, I mean, just going through this, when I see like greater than ninety percent target, and I'm seeing numbers that are in the fifties, like, it just doesn't look right, like, so, I just, I guess, just, ultimately, I want to make, just make sure we're having a, a discussion around the targets and the goals.
Yeah.
Realistic, that you're saying?
Or, yeah, just, I don't, it doesn't paint a great picture in my mind, looking at it and saying, well, ninety percent of students here, and we're, we're in the fifties and...
And, and that's why I just, I get, I, I like to really distinguish between the goals and the targets, because I think it's so important that we're never conveying, like, we, you know, we're good with like sixty-five percent or ninety percent, you know, we want a hundred percent, right? That's our, that's our goal. Our, all of our goals apply to all students. But you have to look at where are you starting? And, and even, you know, discussing it with schools, what we say is, these are our district targets based on where we are as a district. But we've got schools that are starting above and below what the district target is. Now, we would never tell a school, you know, oh, you're good, you're at, you, you know, if our district target is sixty percent and they're at sixty-five, they don't just say, I'm good, no, your target's higher.
Right.
You know, because we're striving toward that goal of, of all students. And then we've got schools who are really far below the district average target, so they're, they're setting their target lower, if I'm making sense. So it's, the only reason I bring that up is I, I would never, I just want to make sure people understand it, so they're not interpreting those targets as we've got goals that aren't for all students.
Right.
How far back do we have this information? Do we have, do we have to go back five years, ten years, twenty years? I mean, how far?
Um, it really doesn't because it wasn't until, um, I, and we revamped the strategic plan and really started looking.
About five years?
At targets for every single grade level in reading and math and what, this is my...
So, oh, but, but, okay, but this is it, this is, there's not more data.
So there's data for some of those, of those targets, like, we have reading data that goes way back for the third grade, but the target, the, the proficiency level was lower because it wasn't matching up to the standards, that correlation between the state standard. So I mean, we do have data that goes back years and years, but it's not exactly the same as the targets we have now.
Apples and oranges.
Right. And we can, we can look at that, you know, but it, it is apples and oranges because it was really, I think, you know, more focused only on reading, um, mostly focused at third grade, and, um, the proficiency level was raised with these targets.
I, I just want to make sure when we dive into this, then, then we, we put the proper time and, and get into it and have that discussion, and that's not for now, but just whatever that is, if it's the next board retreat or meetings down the road, whatever. I would just like to dive into this a little bit more.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we have no unfinished business. So next on our agenda is the new business, which is the boundary recommendation. Mr. Phillips will be presenting.
Good evening.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
I, I saved mine. I'm, I'm doing my part here.
Okay, so you can take one and pass it on, or if you already have one, you're good.
Okay, hold on, oh, wait, hold on, hold on.
There's, there's a five A and a five B.
Five B, five B. There you go.
And then here's the latest round of...
Comments?
Yeah.
You know, I'd like to say thank you to the community members who, who reached out and, and sent us so many comments, that's, that's great.
There definitely have been a lot of community input. So this presentation tonight will, uh, include an update on where we are in the elementary boundary, uh, change process as a result of the, uh, the board meeting on May tenth, where, um... the direction was to create a couple maps that we call Scenario 5A and 5B. And so we did that. We did an online, online presentation along with a, a survey that people could take to give input. That was, again, that was both in English and in Spanish. Just to remind you of the goals for the elementary boundary adjustment. We really want to see a decrease in enrollment at Amun Creek and Sage Crest. They are two of our very largest schools. We want to distribute enrollment more equitably among schools. On October 1, our smallest building was Edison at 326 students. And the largest was Amun Creek at 749 students. So there was that really big disparity. We want to distribute enrollment a little bit better than that. We want to accommodate future growth in the west end of the district. We've talked before about a lot of land being moved around up on Riada as it crosses over the freeway between there and the south side of Badger Mountain. There will be a lot of homes that go in there, and those homes right now are boundary to Amun Creek. So we need to make room for those students. And then we, we want to increase enrollment at the new and larger Ridgeview Elementary. Right, right now, they're one of our smallest buildings. They're in the Fruitland Building, and so it works because they're small. But when they move back, they'll be a larger building and can accommodate more students. This is the timeline that we've been showing each board meeting. As you can see, we, we came to the board in December just with a, kind of a plan on where we were headed with the boundary change. We've actually, the county tonight, I think this is the fifth time that the board has heard information on the boundary change. We have gone to the public, either with face-to-face or online presentations, just kind of explaining where we are each of those times, and then giving an opportunity for them to give input. And then we shared that input with the board. And then so tonight, at the end of the presentation, there will be a final recommendation for you. And that, that would be at the end. So the criteria that we've been using when we look at each of these scenarios, and so far, we've had five, I think, I think we're now to our seventh scenario. We started with three, went to four, went to five, and now we're at 5A and 5, 5B. But each time we create a scenario, we have to think about what does the scenario do with transportation, with walk zones, enrollment balance, like I talked about before, program placements. We don't want to create a problem for like our special education program. And then neighborhoods. We want to keep our, our neighborhoods in mind as we make these decisions. So, so the Kennewick School District continues to seek community feedback. And actually, this is, this is a slide from a couple presentations ago. But we do continue to go to the community to, to ask for that feedback. For boundary changes that'll take effect, not next school year, but the school year after that, which is the 2024, 2025 school year. Four boundary changes were initially developed. We asked for community feedback on those four. We met with the board on April 26 and talked about that feedback at a study session. And then based upon the information and the input from the board at that study session, we, we took some components of Scenario 1, Scenario 4, to create a Scenario 5. Scenario 5 was shared with the community in an online forum, again, with a chance to offer online feedback. And then we talked about that feedback at the May 10th board meeting. And then based upon your direction, at, at the last board meeting, we created a Scenario 5A and Scenario 5B, pretty closely, it's pretty close to, to the original just Scenario 5, but with a couple different tweaks in each scenario. So we have been seeking community input on those two scenarios. And we're hoping for discussion on the feedback, which I'll show here in a little bit, where we're hoping that a decision can be made on, on the boundary change. And I just wanted to add this again, just to make sure this is always out there. Our recommendation is that when the boundary change takes effect, 2024, 2025, is that fifth grade students would be grandfathered to stay in their present school. The fifth graders and their siblings, provided that the families provide transportation for them. Okay, so we'll take a look at the two scenarios. And of course, we always start with the current map. It's, it's kind of where we are today. You'll notice that we have 17 elementaries, but not all 17 elementaries are listed here because they're not all part of any changes. So this is Scenario 5A. So I'll go, I'll go through all of the, the, the different changes. As we, as we talk about 5A, I won't need to do that for 5B because all the changes are pretty close as they are in 5B as they are in 5A. So I want to make sure the cursor works here. Yep. All right, so this area up here is a, is a, it's about 20 students. And it's an area just to the west up here is, is Amun Creek. It sits over here. Sunset View is here. This is that, that, that area that's just to the east of that Black Rock Coffee Stand there on Steptoe. It was about 20 students. They used to belong to Sunset View. We're, we're looking to move them back to Sunset View. This area here, this is all Handsome Park. We're recommending that all of Handsome Park, and it was really clear in the, in the, in the community feedback, that all of Handsome Park wanted to stay together. So this is everything between Clearwater here and then the backside of what I think is called the ridge at Handsome Park. I think that's what it's called. So it's all, it's all of Handsome Park, and they're going to move into Ridgeview. This is also, this here is a little, a little corner of Ridgeview. There are, I believe, 46 students in that area. And we would be looking to move them into Sunset View. Sunset View is one of our small schools that we're looking to raise their enrollment. This area over here, this, this is Hawthorne's Boundary. This is also one of our smaller schools, and so we want to raise that enrollment. There are 76 students who live, live in this area here. Voland is right here. You can just barely see that street right here. This is Voland. And so off of Voland, there are about four streets that go from Voland to this line here. There's, there's about four streets, and then there's a street that runs north-south. So those, those houses that, that are on the east side of that line, they'd stay at Hawthorne. But over their back fence to where the boundary is right now for Vista, all of those students, those 76 students would go to Vista to raise their enrollment. Okay. Edison is our smallest school, and so we really want to try to raise that enrollment. We're looking at these two neighborhoods right here. This has been, it's, all of these so far have been on all the scenarios. We'd be looking to move in these two neighborhoods into Edison. It's a total of about 83 students. At least it was when we first started this process. Moving around this way. So this is the South Gate Boundary. We are looking at moving this area here at the north side of South Gate, moving them into Lincoln. It's about 41 students. And then we've, I think, probably the second time that I presented to the board, it was brought up that there is a new apartment complex going in right about in here. This is 395 along here. This is 10th. Ely sits in here. PUD Building is here. It's going to be an apartment complex here. And so to help with the South Gate enrollment, because they're getting pretty, pretty close to being at capacity, we'd be looking at moving that apartment complex to Lincoln. In Scenario 5A, and actually was in 5 as well, this, this area here is south of South Gate and south of Canyon View. It belongs to Sage Crest. So in Scenario 5A and actually in 5B, we'd be moving these two rectangles up into Canyon View and South Gate. This line right here is Vancouver. Horse Seven Hills sits right here. And so we'd be moving these students, that is, let's see here, I've got it written, 34 students in the smaller rectangle. And in this rectangle, it's 58 students up into South Gate. This area over here, this is the south side of Thompson Hill. It belongs to Sage Crest. And in all of the scenarios that we've talked about over the months, we would be moving them into Ridgeview. We believe someday, hopefully, crossing fingers, that there will be a road at some point that would come around this side of Thompson Hill and could quickly and easily get to Ridgeview, but that's not there. When I talk to transportation, they believe that they could, it'll be about a, a five, a five-minute extra bus ride to get these students here around this way and up into here and up to Ridgeview. I asked them, how much longer would that bus ride be? They said about five more minutes. The other piece here, and it's, it's one of the different pieces in, for 5A, this is, this is the Creekstone area. The Creekstone is in the Ridgeview Boundary. There are about 65 students in that Boundary that, that go to Ridgeview. There are about 27 students, I believe, that are in this Creekstone area that already go to Lincoln. But in Scenario 5A, we would be moving Creekstone into Lincoln. That's Scenario 5A.
Do you have any questions?
Okay.
Comments, but I'll let you finish.
Okay, so if we were to do all those moves, the projected scenario enrollment would be over here in the right-hand column. So Edison, again, it was our, it's our smallest, 326. It would put them over 400. And you can just see that that difference between 326 and 749 has, that's now shrunk. That we're, we're, we're not all, not all schools are going to be 450. For one thing, some schools are built for about that size. Some schools like Amun Creek aren't built to be that small. They have more classrooms. So that, that's what the projected enrollment would be for those, I believe it's eight schools. Actually, 10 schools. Okay? Any questions on Scenario 5A and the projected enrollment? Yes.
Not about the scenario, but I had asked about the additional classrooms, the empty classrooms. Is that what's reflected in the capacity?
Yes, yes. So the capacity, it says, including the use of all available classrooms. So.
Thank you.
So that, you're welcome. So that number is actually, it's a, it's a sum of two numbers, one being empty classrooms. And so we looked at the empty classrooms as being able to take 20 students, which is a really conservative number, but we used 20. And then the other part of that is how many, how many guests really, how many desks are empty in all the classrooms that are being used right now?
Okay.
So that's 5A. This is 5B. And almost everything is identical to 5A. The big piece is that in 5B, Creekstone does not go to Lincoln. In 5A, Creekstone goes to Lincoln. In 5B, they stay put. And this area, which was on, let's see, it was on Scenarios 1, 2, and 3, I believe, that area is, is going to go up into Lincoln in 5B. So this is Hildebrandt here. This is a New Street McKinley, Creekstone Boulevard, and the canal is back in here. And then this is South Ridge Boulevard. So that's 5B. And I think you have that map in front of you along with the projected enrollment scenario, or projected scenario enrollment. Numbers are, again, it's, it's, we tried to shrink that difference between biggest and smallest. Any questions on 5B?
Can I go back to 5A? Sorry, I'm just trying to read all the numbers. So on 5A, South Gate is over capacity.
So South Gate is, yeah, with those numbers, South Ridge is over.
South Gate.
They're over capacity. The capacity number, so you'll see in a little, in a couple more slides, a few more slides, some of the community input, some community members did say, you know, in both scenarios, in both 5A and 5B, South Gate, their, their capacity says 439, but the projected enrollment is, is 456. So, yeah, it's, it's over the capacity, but it was at 17. So, so today, Vic Roberts and I sat down. We, we polled the actual enrollment count for, for South Gate and took a look at how many students were in each grade level and figure, okay, so they have four classrooms in K3, and three classrooms in 45. And we, we, we took another look at the capacity. And I didn't change it on here because that would have, I mean, it would have looked a little hokey because now it's different. But we really believe that the capacity for South Gate is 470. If we, if we look at those classrooms that are designated for kindergarten, first, second, and third, and each classroom is, we, we, again, it's very conservative, but we put 20 in those rooms. And then we looked at the fourth and fifth grade classrooms and said, okay, so they could go up to 25, which is also a very conservative number. Most of our schools, like fourth and fifth, are like at 26, 27, 28, in some cases up to 29. So we really believe, after looking at it again today, that that capacity number is 470.
Not to make your job harder, but. But this maybe will. So if you did that very fine tuning on that school, would you see differences in other schools if you did that?
Potentially. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what happened with South Gate when we originally took a look at those numbers. Like, I guess that would be possible.
I just, you know, numbers are numbers. Bodies are different, right? When you put all of those kids in a room, it's, it's different. And so I just want to make sure that we're super accurate in, in what we have.
Yeah, and so as, as you look at the, at the other buildings' capacity and their enrollment, so, so we, yeah, we were, we were off by a few with South Gate. And we really, again, we really believe that, that the capacity is a little bit more than 439. But when you look at the other buildings, you know, the difference between, like, say, at Lincoln, their capacity says 542, and they're a long ways away from that in the scenarios. So even if, even if we were to go back and take that same look with all the other schools, I, I don't think it would be enough to, to, to be a problem there.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Okay. So we, like I said, we, we did a, an online YouTube presentation that, that the community could take a look at, to look at Scenarios 5A and 5B. We put that out to all the affected schools through Parents Square. I looked, right before this meeting, there were 743 views of, of that presentation. And there were 100, I think it's 107 people who filled out the online input form. So we'll take a look at some of that information. So this shows all of those people who, who responded to that online survey. You can see that Ridgeview had. You can see that Ridgeview had almost sixty percent of the people who responded were for Ridgeview, sixty-two total out of the hundred, one hundred and six. After that, it was Sagecrest, which makes sense because Ridgeview and Sagecrest really in, in between five A and five B, those, those are the two schools that are the most, they're really affected in a different way in this scenario as compared to, like, say, five or four. And then there's a smattering of other schools.
And that, that Ridgeview is Canyon Lakes and Hanson Park?
Canyon Lakes is Sagecrest.
Not Canyon Lakes.
Creekstone?
Creekstone.
Yep. So after the question of, you know, what school does your child attend? The question is, which scenario do you like best? And so scenario, scenario five A, there were thirty-five people who said, I like five A better, thirty-three percent. And then scenario five B, seventy-two people or sixty-eight percent that said they liked five B better. Five B, that's the one where Creekstone stays where they are, and that area, just the Sagecrest area just above Hildebrandt to the north goes up into Lincoln. So I took a look at all the comments that you have in front of you, the, again, I think it was a hundred and six, a hundred and seven, somewhere in there, and I just kind of boiled that down to, just to kind of encapsulate, you know, like, give you a summary of what that would look like, or what it really looked like. So a lot of comments that were just simply, I like five A better because I get to stay where, where I am. We, we don't have to move. But there were a few comments, of course, Sagecrest neighborhood north of Hildebrandt, they get to stay at Sagecrest. Students, a few people said students are more evenly distributed, it allows for more room to grow at Ridgeview. Panoramic height, students would have to cross, walk across Creekstone, which I, there, there weren't, there was only like a couple people that said that, but I thought that was a really, I think it was an important piece. It was like a bunch of people said that, but that's something we'll have to, have to think about. But they would have to cross, and so I'll just need to talk to April Heiser to, to make sure, so would they be able to catch a bus? Or would they have to walk? And if they have to walk and cross Creekstone Boulevard, what, what might that look like? The Sagecrest neighborhood north of Hildebrandt was moved from Lincoln to Sagecrest seven years ago. There were a few comments about that, that, that same neighborhood, neighborhood that we're talking about, they used to belong to Lincoln. And so that, I just thought that was a really important comment. And then a couple people said that it makes Creekstone a walk zone if homes are moved to Lincoln. So if Creekstone became a Lincoln boundary neighborhood, that could, that'd be a walk zone if, for most, if not all of them. Again, that walk zone in an elementary is a mile.
And not crossing any major streets, right? Like, not crossing Thames or whatever, that's part of the...
So I think that if it's less than a mile, this is what I think, I don't know if you want to hear it, I think, but what I think it is, is that if, if they're crossing like a, like, like there's a, there's something dangerous about that walk that's only point six of a mile, then we can go through a process to take a look at that. These are the comments for scenario, scenario five B. So students in Creekstone get to stay at Ridgeview. Again, I think you went in that, in this slide here, where you look at the Ridgeview, Ridgeview line, sixty-two of them, many of them were, that's where that comment came from, from, from those folks. Students in Creekstone get to stay at Ridgeview. The least displacement of students. There were quite a few of this comment, students who have attended Ridgeview at Fruitland, at the Fruitland Building, would be allowed to attend the new Ridgeview. There, there were just some comments about, so my students have endured, you know, almost a year, and will endure another half-year at, at Fruitland, they want to be able to stay at Ridgeview. They, some comments about five B best meets K S D's objectives of increasing Ridgeview's enrollment, decreasing Sagecrest. A few people wrote, and actually on both sides, five A and five B, that people bought their home in a specific boundary, and now we're moving them to a different boundary. Relieves enrollment at Sagecrest, keeps students closer to their school, more aligned, more closely aligned with original three scenarios. And I, I'm going to guess that what they're talking about is that one neighborhood north of Hildebrandt, that's, that was the way it was in the first three scenarios. More room for growth at Sagecrest. And then there was a question, is, is there any other input that you want to give? A couple comments about South Gate, enrollment is over capacity. There were a few comments, and there have been a few comments in previous feedback from, from communities, is, or the feedback was, you know, my child's going to be a fifth grade student in that school year, now they're going to have to change schools in their last year. So I just want to, yeah, I just want to be really clear that our recommendation is that those students actually would get to stay at their homeschool as long as parents provide the transportation. In each of the input sessions, there has been a couple comments about, there, I'm going to assume that the people who live in that, that small area that belongs to Amen Creek by Blackrock Coffee say that they shouldn't have to move to Sunset View, they said, once I can see Amen Creek from my backyard, so forth. There were a few comments about boundaries should not cross three ninety-five, I've seen that one in, in the other, in the other sessions of input. And then teachers weren't asked for it. I mean, they weren't asked specifically as a teacher group, I mean, everybody was asked because of that. So that's a summary of parent community feedback.
Questions?
So I read all the same stuff you did, you know? Thank you for that summary, I think it's pretty good. It seems like there's like, the people at, at Ridgeview, or the people in, in, what's that word?
Creekstone.
Creekstone, want to go to Ridgeview, we paid our dues, you know, we've been in Fruitland, that's kind of the sentiment, I don't blame them, you know? I just wonder how many of those people really understand the, the being grandfathered-in component? Because it seems like maybe that, that wasn't, like, they're making a comment like, my, my kid's good, but, you know, so, I mean, half of these comments, I'm like, that's not actually going to happen, you know?
So.
Is, so I just wonder if they understood that, how that would change that whole data set, right? I mean, because, because that, that seems like literally half of the comments were that, where we've kind of, I want my kid to go to Ridgeview because we paid her, you know? And so, so I think long-term, it makes sense to keep neighborhoods together, long-term, right? I mean, kids grow up together, they're playing together, that, you know, so. To me, scenario A keeps both neighborhoods to get intact, get together long-term. Short-term, I understand, so that grandfathered-in element of having kids be able to go to Ridgeview from, you know, from Creekstone, I, I think that maybe alleviates it. So that, that's kind of my over, you know, overview of it is, is I understand paying your dues, you know, that kind of sentiment, long-term keeping neighborhoods together, I think that's better for the community. And, you know, five B, like, splits a neighborhood in half, a strong neighborhood in half, and that school's in that neighborhood. And so I kind of think five A is the best one. Considering the grandfathering element.
We're just jumping in, boom, boom?
Yeah.
Grant, so, talking about grandfathering students, and we're talking about fifth graders.
And their siblings.
And their siblings. So if a student's in fifth, if a family has a fifth grader, a third grader, and a kindergartner, the kindergarten and third grader are going to be grandfathered in to go to that elementary school the entire...
For, for that year.
But not, but not the rest of the time. So once they complete the year, they would have to go to their boundary school, correct?
In this recommendation, yes. I mean, you...
So we're grandfathering for a year, but after that year, if you're in Creekstone and, and you're supposed to go to Lincoln, you're, you would be going to Lincoln the next year. So it only...
Could we change, we could change that though, right? We could say...
But we're also not providing them transportation.
They, they have to do it.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
But then, but then we, then we get run, we run that part where, okay, so now a family sells their house in Creekstone, and they weren't grandfathered in, so now they're going to go to Lincoln, and everyone on the street's grandfathered into Ridgeview, and so it's just, like, that would take, you'd have to have seventy families move out to move in to kind of make, make that adjustment. So that's my, that's my comment on grandfathering.
And it's not this year, it's a year from now.
Correct. So, so those students who would be grandfathered, those fifth graders, today they're third grade.
Third graders, yeah.
Yeah, they're third grade.
And then just as, as far as enrollment goes, I mean, I, I particularly like five being the fact that Ridgeview's up at four hundred and seventy-two students, with still some room to grow versus leaving the brand, a brand-new school with a hundred-ish opening. You know, I look at the enrollments, and, and we got a couple schools in five hundreds and a couple in low, four hundreds in five A. Five B, it seems kind of like it evens them a little bit more in the mid-four-hundred range. So just the numbers seem to make more sense to me that way. I mean, I don't disagree with the neighborhood comments, I mean, everybody wants to have their neighborhoods go together, but, I mean, ultimately, we're, we're going to have to make a decision, and neither one's going to, I mean, someone's not going to be happy, so...
So exactly what you're saying about, you know, leaving room for growth, so in five B, for both Sagecrest and Ridgeview, leaves more room to grow. But if we go back to the original reason for this, it was for staffing, right? And to move, moving, or not the original, but part of the...
I think it was part of the... Potentially part of the conversation, and not so much having a bunch of teachers like, say, at Amen Creek, really, really, part of the staffing was, like at, like at Amen Creek, they just, they had more, had more of a need for, for counselors, let's, let's say.
Or the specialists. We had some originally music teachers, or librarians, excuse me, we're going to have to, or library secretaries, we're going to have to spend some extra time going and coming and all that. And so it seems to me, if I'm looking at the numbers, and I tried to write them down the other day, that B makes it more equitable number-wise throughout the district, through the elementary, and that hopefully, unless we have a huge influx, you know, on the hill there, we don't have to look at moving staff around again, or, or splitting a day for a staff member or something.
For like the specialists?
Right.
That, that...
Yeah, not, not regular.
Yeah, some schools will lose like classroom teachers.
Correct. But you're not going to split, like, a third-grade teacher fifty-fifty, but you could have to do that to a specialist.
We've had that conversation, yeah.
And so I, I know how strongly communities feel about their music teacher, their librarian, their P E teacher, that's a, that's a very important thing, too. And so, you know, we had an ugly situation right before I joined the board about, between K I and Southridge, about sharing a music teacher, and that did not go very positively. And I don't want to have to look at doing that again. So I, I think B, there, there's positive and negative involved, but I think that B keeps that from happening maybe in a, in a less, less time if we keep going.
All thoughts, comments?
People spoke, and it wasn't close. We have to take that in consideration, the public, the people that were concerned or had thoughts clearly stated, I think it was sixty-some percent, thirty-some percent. We have to take that in consideration, we are.
When was the last boundary change? Someone said twenty sixteen, is that accurate?
I can't remember exactly, Mr. Roberts, it was either, it was either twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen, whatever.
If not, I will entertain a motion.
I motion that the board approve, well, approves the recommendation of scenario five B be implemented as the future elementary boundary effective twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Questions or comments? If not, I will call, the real call vote, please.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
No.
Ms. Dunbit?
Yes.
Mr. Mabry?
Yes.
And Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Rob, thank you. I know we made you jump through a lot of hoops on this, so we appreciate you voting the extra mile.
Thank you.
It was my pleasure.
He says with a smile.
Yeah.
Thank you, Rob.
Was it your pleasure?
We'll do it again, next year.
No, he will...
Can I actually ask a question about that? Is there a way, like, we put this on more of a rotating schedule to kind of look at?
I totally agree with that.
You know, so it doesn't get to the point where we've got the huge gap in enrollment, so even if it's just every couple of years, it's kind of looked at to make sure we're tracking correctly.
I think the reason that it, it happened, and Rob, you can, he's not listening, but it, with our big schools that we added, that made a big difference. When we kept everybody at four hundred, it wasn't so much as many people moving, but when we went to seven hundred, and that was the discussion when the Sage, when Amen Creek and... Amistad, thank you, I'm going next door. That was a question, and I remember Heather talking about that, that what's that going to do?
Yeah.
And so that's...
Whenever you build a new elementary school, it makes sense to me to build it a little more on the east side, like, maybe the property behind the dam or something like that, that seems to be, it's like, those schools seem fixed, right? And, and adding a little more space and fluidity to those seems like the way to go. Who perthought?
Okay. Next meeting agenda is the semi-annual board retreat. We will be discussing the annual board self-assessment, board goal setting, twenty-three, twenty-four district priorities, and the twenty-three, twenty-four board meeting calendar. Yes?
And just a reminder about that, the board received the link for the self-assessment, and so...
Yes.
Yes.
It was a couple days ago.
Last Friday. I can, I'll, I'll send it again, but if you can have that completed by the thirty-first, that gives Tricia Wasd, from Wasd, time to go through it and prepare for that part of the facilitation of the retreat. I'll remind you.
Thank you.
How long? I was just going to ask, how, how long, like, it sounds like it's two portions, so how long is Tricia's portion versus the actual portion where we're...
Yeah, you know, I think we, we, I, I, when I talked with her, and, you know, we can modify this, but we said essentially, you know, ninety minutes for that part, and then the rest of it for the priority setting, and so similar to how we structured it last year.
Yeah, do we want to make provisions for graduation, what do you call it, when special case?
Yes, thank you. I have that on my to-do list, to schedule. I'll send out some meeting invitations just so we can get some time on our calendars, both between ceremonies, but prior to the, to the ceremonies, too. So I, I will do that.
Okay, nothing else. We are going to adjourn into a executive session here, or I say twenty minutes, and I'm going to say thirty, because we never hit our time limit, I guess. So we will be in executive session until approximately seven fifty. Thank you so much.